Call the June 9, 2020 With County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Tonight, we have Pastor Michael Hoback of the Withfield First Assembly of God to provide the invocation. If you would please stand or remain standing and pledge allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father God, we thank you for another blessed day, another opportunity to join together, Lord, to make decisions, God. God, as we gather here in this place today, it's our hearts desire and prayer that God, the Holy Spirit, would be upon each and every one, that God every decision is made would be glorifying to the Lord Jesus Christ. Father, I pray today that God you give each and every one discernment and decision making this day. Father, we ask your blessing and the Holy Spirit to be present, and it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda, citizens' time. Have a couple people signed up. Start with Mr. Gus Kinsler.
Sorry, I haven't been here for so long. I thought we were not allowed to come, but just wanted to see if anything, if y'all have done anything with the thing I was talking about before all the COVID hit with the House Bill 461? That was, or 421, my bad, that was passed. Think I brought up a bunch of stuff to y'all about it, and just wanted to see if y'all had took any action or decided not to do anything. It has passed, and it will be signed, and it will take effect July 1st. So it will be where y'all can make a decision to ban guns from any public event or any park or anything, and I was asking if y'all would do an ordinance that you would not do that. I know this board will not do that, but it will protect from years down the road, another board of doing that, they would have to have a public hearing before they could act on that law. So just curious if y'all considered or done anything, or...
We went back, well, I mean, we've got the Second Amendment sanctuary ordinance. If you go back and read it, it says that we won't expend any county funds. And part of House Bill 421, if a governing body were to pass that type of ordinance, you have to have signage. And signage, whether you print it off a printer or you buy real fancy signs that say no guns, you're spending county funds, or...
Right.
So, you know, in my opinion, and I don't know if anybody else wants to chime in, but the Second Amendment sanctuary resolution covers that because it's, and even to enforce it, you know, then that was part of it, not to enforce anything that goes against the Second Amendment.
Well, I was just, you know, I was just curious, and I hadn't heard nobody say, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, Gus.
Thank you, Gus.
Next up is Zachary Wright.
Thank you. I'm Zach Wright. I'm with the Thrasher Group. We were recently selected as a, for general engineering services for With County, and I just wanted to come down and introduce myself and thank the board and the members of the selection committee. You guys will probably see me from time to time, so I just wanted to come down and introduce myself to everybody, so I appreciate it. And I've met some of you a time or two, but some of you I haven't met yet, so just come say hi.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we had signed up. Is there anybody else like to speak? Going once, going twice? Not hearing any. I'll close citizens' time, move on to the public hearing, the first public hearing. Amendment number two courthouse security fee ordinance. Mr. Baird, do you want to summarize, or you want me to read the notice first?
Either way, Mr. Chairman, however you like to proceed.
In compliance with Section 53.1-120 of the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to consider amendment two to ordinance number 2002-2 entitled courthouse security fee ordinance of With County, Virginia. The Board of Supervisors will hear comments from citizens concerning the proposed amendment. The public hearing will be held on Tuesday, June 29, 2020, at 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. A copy of the proposed amendment is on file at the county administrator's office located at 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia, or online at www.withco.org for public review.
Mr. Chairman, members that are here, just to give a little bit of information, courthouse security fee ordinance was originally adopted back in the early 2000s and was amended since then up to $10. The funds that collect, that are collected for this are used to pay for the bailiffs and courthouse security items at the courtroom, and it has been a stretch at times for the sheriff to keep the budget within lines of the revenue being received. This year, the General Assembly allowed the counties to adopt an ordinance to increase the fee from $10 to $20, and what you have before you is amendment number two to the ordinance 2002-2 to increase this fee from $10 to $20 effective July 1, 2020.
We didn't have anybody signed up to speak on that public hearing. We need to take action on that?
I would recommend, Mr. Chairman, that we take action to adopt this ordinance after you've closed the public hearing.
Since no one's signed up, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to adopt amendment number two for the courthouse security fee ordinance.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second. Any questions or discussion? Even though I'm not paid through the courthouse security fund, I will abstain from voting. Hearing no questions or discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
So approved. Moving on the agenda, public hearing for the emergency continuity... Help me out with that.
Continuity.
Continuity of operations ordinance. In compliance with the Code of Virginia and amendments thereto, the With County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing to hear public comment regarding an ordinance entitled emergency ordinance to fixuate temporary changes in certain deadlines in the modified public meeting and public hearing practices and procedures to address continuity...
Continuity, yes.
...of operations associated with the pandemic disaster. The public hearing will be held Tuesday, June 29, 2020, 6:00 PM in the boardroom of the With County Office Building, 340 South Sixth Street, Withfield, Virginia. Copy of the ordinance is on file with the county administrator's office for public review or online at www.withco.org. Want to summarize that one, Mr. Baird?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. On April 14 of 2020, the Board of Supervisors adopted this emergency ordinance under the emergency provisions. It is required to have a public hearing on that within 60 days, I believe, to ratify the action. I would recommend upon hearing of any public comments on this, the board take action to ratify the ordinance adopted April 14, 2020.
We didn't have anybody sign up for public comments. Anybody like to speak? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance.
Make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is the payment of invoices. Entertain a motion to pay the invoices as presented. So moved. Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Is there any invoice that any supervisor wants to pull out or discuss? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved. Moving on to item number seven, minutes of the previous meeting for May 26, 2020. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions, discussions, or corrections? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Next item on the agenda is old business. First off, we've got some appointments.
Go ahead, I can't... Page 55 of the agenda has the appointments. We'll start with the ones that are on there. First of all, Recreation Committee is Melanie Jefferson, and I believe that's out of Coy's district. She's eligible for reappointment.
She wish to stay on that note for you? Now I can make a motion for her. Have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Melanie Jefferson to the Recreation Committee. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
Social Services Board, Jonathan Hammond is available for reappointment. Unfortunately, Joel Haush is not available for reappointment. He served very well in that position and will be missed. I recommend reappointment of Jonathan Hammond to the Social Services Board.
Have a motion to reappoint Jonathan, I was getting ready to call him pastor, Jonathan Hammond, DSS Board.
So moved.
Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next one is vacant there for Mr. Haush's position. I do not have any recommendations. If we, I don't know if anyone else does. If not, we need to probably come up with someone by our next meeting.
Can you really have recommendations? I have a motion to make, please, to appoint Ms. Maggie Harless, and that one, I believe, is the one from Ms. Ayers.
Have a motion to appoint Maggie Harless to the DSS Board. Have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved.
With Grayson Regional Library Board, we had a recent vacation there. We have a vacancy on that board.
I did speak to Ms. Ayers, who was in attendance at the last meeting when Ms. Anna Rae Roberts resigned. She did state that she would be interested in serving on the library board. I talked to Mr. Baird, didn't see any conflict with her being DSS director. She does have a lot of experience, budgetary experience, personnel experience, and a frequent user of libraries, so if anybody wants to make a motion to appoint Ms. Kimberly Ayers...
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion, have a second. Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Smith?
Aye.
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 So approved.
The next one with a name down there is the New River Regional Water Authority, and that's Mr. Gene Horny. However, the authority every four years rotates membership. We have equal representation with the town of Withfield, or equal buy-in percentages with the town of Withfield, and therefore, we have three members for four years, and then it rotates, and they have three members for four years, the opposite years. We have two members, and Carroll County always has two members. So basically, it follows election years, is the easy way, or presidential election years. So therefore, Mr. Horny is not eligible for reappointment in that position. The town of Withfield will be appointing someone for the next four years in that term. We recently appointed Mr. Terry, and Mr. Terry and Mr. Horny can decide if they want to change positions or anything else in the process, but that's, we'll only have myself and one other board member represented on that board.
Y'all can wrestle that out.
Mr. Horny, just inform me that I would be staying there, so...
I assumed that, but I didn't want to put words in his mouth.
That's Mr. Sutherland said to me.
We're going to arm wrestle for it. My arm's hurting.
At one meeting, Mr. Sutherland said, "That's not our call on this board. That's up to you all to decide," and so, but that's, there are those ones. The other two are Mount Rogers Planning District Commission, Mount Community Action Program, I'm sorry, the third one, the New River Mount Rogers Workforce Development Board. Staff does not have any recommendations on any of those at this time.
If anybody will put their, or everybody will put their fillers out and see if we can find some people to fill that. I don't know, we'll, do we have a vacant position on Mount Rogers Planning District? Or, because that position was created when Mr. Reeves was chosen as chairman, and then I joined to fill the board. You may check on that.
We'll follow up with Aaron and just confirm that numbers. That's a good idea.
Anybody else have any other appointments? Moving on to other under old business. Mr. Baird, do we have anything?
I do not have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Does any other board member, or does any board member have anything under old business? Move on to new business. First item's the COVID-19 update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, Mr. Crawford has been giving you all the updates. We've had a slight uptick in our numbers recently on it. The main thing I wanted to address here is actually with the COVID-19 was the item listed in number B there, and that is the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act. As you are aware, we have been notified of the amount coming from the federal government for this. We are on target to receive $2,502,568 in CARES Act funding. The, this includes the town share, so roughly one-third of this amount will be distributed between the two towns in working with them, unless we come across some items that are countywide related, that, such as, you know, schools, or fire and rescue, or anything like that, that funds may come out of that, that we would take off of that hole before we do any distribution with the towns. So I will be meeting with the town managers to talk about their share and how they draw down and have an agreement with them, basically indicating that they understand the rules. We have to submit the documentation at the end of this on their behalf and our behalf to show that the funds were spent in compliance with this act.
And that was a question I had, is the, you know, it's odd the way they're doing this. The money comes to the county upfront.
Yes.
And anything we spend, or anything that is spent, has to be within the guidelines that they gave us, 16 or 17 pages, whatever it was. So if we give a third to the town of Withfield and the town of Rettreat, who's on the hook for the money if what they spend it on is not within the guidelines?
Well, that's, I have received a draft agreement that came in, basically, that when we provide the money to the towns, and the town manager is signing off, their town is approving, saying, "We agreed to meet, to do it the guidelines." And I want to have, I'll call it a clawback provision in there. Any expenditure deemed non-acceptable or whatever, they will reimburse the county for those expenditures.
Did you, did you say one-third was to be split?
Between the two towns combined. Basically, Withfield gets 28% of the money, and Rettreat gets 4% to 5% of the money based on the population. So 33% of it goes out, so we will have about 1.6 million in expenditures here. A lot of things we are focusing on right now, you know, the terms that no one likes hearing, but if we have a resurgence, whatever, we're trying to make certain we have everyone within county administration and also working with the constitutional officers, if they need to work from home, if we have another type of shutdown, if we're not able to come into the office, that we've got computers and network capabilities for as many individuals to work from home as necessary. So computer upgrades are a big part of the things that have been looked at there. I'm meeting or talking regularly with other county administrators, going through the guidelines of what the funds can be used and how we use those funds. There's economic development or economic continuation ways to use those funds and other things. You all may have received an email this week from Extension asking for a payment of those funds of helping with some programs. So I do anticipate that we will be receiving several requests from organizations, and we will be needing to deem that those are or are not in compliance with the guidelines. An additional item, and I have spoken with our auditor about this, this amount will need to be added into our budget. We're at the end of the fiscal year right now. We could hold a public hearing on June 30 to amend and appropriate that into the budget, but his recommendation is just to go ahead at our public hearing Thursday night, go ahead and just include, and I'll have a handout to give to all of you all, that recommends amending this into a CARES Act line within our budget for the $2.5 million for next year.
And I assume we'll put it under its own line.
Yeah, it'll be entire separate line item, and two of the first expenditures will probably be the distributions to the town.
To the town. So we don't need to take any action on that tonight?
No action needed tonight, just informational purpose, and if you all understand where we're heading with the budget, that's the main thing. I wanted to make certain everybody stood there.
Move on to the next item on the agenda, the Withfield Fire Department.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We did a agreement in, earlier this year, approved, and I believe it was effective in March. Basically, we have four months of the fiscal year of that agreement. I have calculated what we have spent to date with the Withfield Fire Department and the With County Rescue Squad, and recommend you all amend and appropriate $9,294, and that will make our final payment to the Fire Department and fulfill our obligation for this fiscal year.
Entertain a motion to amend and appropriate $9,294 to Withfield Fire Department? Have a motion, have a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion?
And next year's budget, as y'all know, has the $125,000 for the entire year. They sent us a request for $125,000, and I informed them that we would only be giving them one-third of the year payment on that, and next year's budget picks up the whole $125,000.
So this covers everything here, right?
Just, yes.
Or the 92.
Can't blame them for trying.
Yep.
Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Terry?
Aye.
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 So approved. Anything else under new business, Mr. Baird?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman. No new business for this. I will just mention at the, at the end of the meeting, you all do have a resolution in front of you to discuss for the graduating class of 2020, since this is an unusual year. And at the same time, our public information officer would like to take time at the end of the meeting for you all to consider adopting this, and also if you all want to make some comments to the graduating class, and he will take and cut those items out and try to put together a little social media post for you all to recognize the 2020 graduates. So if Mr. Vault and I can remember, when we get to the end of the agenda, we want to take just a brief, one-minute recess, just to give Mr. Farley time to get everything set up upstairs, and then we'll get started.
Because when I see recess, I'm ready to pack it up. All right, move on to Board Supervisor reports. Mr. Terry?
I don't have anything at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Horny?
Just had a complaint a little while ago about a road, Fleming Road. Can you contact VDOT? I'm sure there's thousands of other ones, but that's one I've had a complaint about. Other than that, I think that's it.
Mr. McRoberts?
I had some road issues upstate, Mr. Baird.
Ms. Lawson?
I don't have anything at this time.
Mr. Cook? There was an email went out requesting a budget work session prior to the 11th June meeting, and I haven't seen anything on that yet. Is there...
Yeah, I sent a response back to everyone, just asking if you all wanted to have it. I was off all last week. If you all wanted to have it Monday night, or just discuss any of that tonight, and I assume we can discuss any of that tonight, or if you all want to recess and have a work session tomorrow night. I currently have a meeting with Landmines Rescue Squad at 5:00 tomorrow night, so my recommendation would be if you have any questions, let me know, and if I can see what I can answer tonight, or get answers to you before Thursday night.
So the, I know the asterisk here on the paper that you give us out in the report.
Yep.
It says that figure covers all six plus the benefits.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, I handed you all, I talked to Mr. Smith yesterday, and he indicated, the sheriff's office was just wanting, I guess, some clarification on that, and I gave chief deputy one here also. What you've got there is a copy of the expenditure budget, broken out by the funding sources, and you can see that the PAF fund has a total expenditure, estimated expenditures next year of $774,516. Moving over to the general fund is the salaries and benefits for the six deputies, and then the action that you've already agreed to this year of the IT position moving over. So those have come out of the general fund, or come out of the PAF fund and are funded by the general fund. So that's $336,525 total added to the general fund this year that was not budgeted last year. You can see that the PAF projected revenue budget is $722,500. So this would require, if that was all revenue that came in, this would require $52,000 to come out of the reserves that are in the PAF, which is currently sitting with $452,000. So that would mean at the end of the year next year, it would be sitting at $400,000. Now, that's all projected on revenues, and I include it just to your right, just the actual PAF collections over the last three years and current year-to-date this year, and you can see there at 882,561. Of course, courts are gradually getting back in session, but they'll have the tickets that have not been addressed so far, but there also will be a delay because obviously the sheriff has not been, had his staff out as much on the road as well. But, you know, hopefully, the revenue will come in to meet that. And then at the bottom, what I show is, and this is, this is the big point, because basically the $336,000 that we've taken from the PAF and add to the general fund, that's about 1.5 cents of real estate tax to, if we were to pick that up. The general fund reserve required to balance the budget this year is $1.8 million. So we are pulling a lot of money out of reserves this year, which is what we indicated we were going to do to balance the budget, and that counts for about eight cents of tax to, eight cents of real estate tax that is coming out of reserves. And this is larger than what we've been anticipating. And this is larger than what we've been anticipating. Now, we are hoping that the school system returns a large amount of money to us that will help soften that impact. But, you know, as you can see, everybody is pulling some out of reserves, including water and wastewater departments, they're pulling out of reserves to balance the budget this year. And do keep in mind, we did not revise our revenue projections. So, we are still anticipating the full million dollars of meals and lodging tax. We're still anticipating the full $3.7 million of sales and use tax. As those numbers, they can hit an impact, then it may mean even more coming out of our reserve funds to balance those budgets.
So, the 275, that is what they paid for six salaries in the past? And that covers the ben, it seems low to me.
That's the six salaries and the benefits.
So, that includes the benefits?
Yep.
So, did you have a chance to look at the vehicles that we discussed today? Because the notes I had that we, they requested six, we said we would give the three.
Yeah, we, they requested six and then they came back and said they would lower their request when everybody was trying to look at decreasing their budget. Those have not been pulled out of coming out of the general fund. If you want to pull those out of the general fund, then you move another $90,000 out of the police activity fund and put that in to the general fund. And at that point in time, you've got them building up a surplus of about $40,000 into the PAF. And, you know, I think what you do is you, you're going to be monitoring all the budgets throughout the year. If the PAF is coming in stronger than it needs to be, then you'll be okay. If you're looking at you need to make transfers to the PAF as you go through, you can look at doing that.
And I get that, but I thought we had agreed to do the cars. I don't know, maybe I'm misunderstanding my notes that I had that we, we agreed that we would buy the three cars.
I got the same notes, Mr. Smith.
I've got the, I've got the two cars in the SRO budget that we are buying that are still in there and that's coming out of the general fund. So, there's two in the general fund that's in the SRO budget. I had it cut back to three. I did not have it coming from the general fund. You can move it to the general fund. If that's how you want, we'll just move $90,000 over. You know, my only opinion is that that just means you're going now up to $2 million or 1.9 million coming out of the general fund reserves. And I think the thing is, we want everybody to try to balance as much as they can. And if they can bring in more than $722,000, and we've cut that revenue projection way back, if they're able to bring in even what they brought through 11 months this year, the 882,000, even on where they are, they're going to be $160,000 to the good. So, I don't, my thing is, the goal's not to be trying to build up the PAF or trying to build up the general fund. The goal is trying to balance the budget and keep pulling out of reserves as little as we can out of both of them.
Yeah, and I guess my disconnect is, and I understand what you're saying, but if we all agreed, so that's why I'm looking at everybody else, unless I wrote my notes down, you know, it shouldn't have changed from the time we discussed it to the time that you had the conversation with the Sheriff's Department.
Well, keep in mind, the county administrator only gives you all recommended budget. You all can change anything on this budget you want. So, my recommendation would be to leave the $90,000 coming out of the police activity fund for the vehicles. And as you go through the year, see where the balance goes.
Well, and to add in on some of that, you know, after some of the comments that were made at the last budget meeting, when you go back and you look at it, you said that we would, it would mess our credit rating up or whatever if we were to borrow the four-and-a-half million dollars from the general fund, it would make, but, you know, if we look at it, you're looking at four-and-a-half million dollars to provide a service to our citizens through water. And when I go back to the budget, I see $8 million for a building, but we already have a building. Granted, we may need a new county administrator's office, but we've got one that'll work. These people don't have water that'll work. And then we go back even farther, and I don't want to make people mad, because I have no intentions of voting against somebody getting a raise, but you made the comment a few meetings ago that the people that don't have water, they knew that when they moved there. Well, the people knew what their salary was when they, when they agreed to take the job. So, it's the same thing. And we need to take care of our people.
Just a couple of clarifications on what you said. Number one, you said $8 million for a new building. There's not $8 million for a new building in the budget. There is a $2 million proposal for the extension of the county office building. You also said for a new county administrator's office, and that is not correct either. That is not for the county administrator's office. That is for the, that building over there, I don't plan on my office changing, plan on my office staying right here in this. We have been in discussions with the Commissioner of Revenue and the Treasurer of relocating to the first floor of that building, which then frees up room for the Commonwealth Attorney to come out of the basement of the Circuit Court Building and go into their offices over there. It gives room on the second floor of this proposed new building for either county administration or DSS expansion or Health Department expansion. So, you know, that was an item we talked about during the budget. It is a $2 million that is looking at being borrowed for continuation of that building and using the 800 and some thousand dollars that is remaining from the previous issuance to do that. You all have made it very clear that water projects are a priority. We included money in here to go ahead and start studying the next projects. The surveys have gone out to start the next project and then we can go and borrow those funds for whatever we want. And I think that's important, because you have talked about using general fund dollars to help fund those. And, you know, it's just the same thing. We're taking $336,000 of general fund dollars to help cover because the PAF is having challenges, because revenues are not coming in like they were before, we're not getting the court fines and forfeitures like we were before. You know, that's $336,000 that we need to keep that service going. It's also $336,000 that we can use to go towards water and sewer. $90,000 that we're talking about for the vehicles, $90,000 in debt service on a four-year debt service provides a very large project for our next water and sewer project, if we're going to be pulling out of the general fund. So, understand what you're saying. Like I said, this is, this is only the things that are the recommended budget and based on what I understood the conversations to be, we're more than willing to take the $90,000 out. You all just give the directions, you know, following our budget public hearings. If we want to go ahead and take another $90,000 out of the general fund, play for that. If you don't want to use $2 million for this building next door, for the Commissioner and the Treasurer and improving for the Commonwealth Attorney, take that out. I mean, my only responsibility is just to give you a budget based on input and where we are. I take no offense to any changes, revisions, or recommendations you want to make on it.
So, one last thing for me and then I'll hush so we can move on. But, you know, I know we sit through a lot of budgets, we've heard a lot of budgets here. But it seems even before I was elected, I can only speak for me, it seems like when other departments come in and talks, talk about budgets, it's pretty open. But then when the Sheriff's Department comes in, there's a whole atmosphere change, like a different attitude toward them. I just don't understand.
Well, I don't have any different attitudes toward it. I can certainly tell you that. I mean, it's, that's why I called Officer, or called the sheriff a week ago, or I guess two weeks ago now, to come up and discuss the current state of the budget, where we were, just confirming, we were still paying for some, I think I told you we were paying for some part-time positions for school resource officers and just seeing how much we had left on that and make certain we weren't going over number of the hours, to talk about the upcoming budget and where we were going with the upcoming budget, to share that information and where we were. I then received, you know, your comments, your email the next day, indicating concerns and needing to schedule a work session to discuss budget, to which I responded and said we could schedule a work session and also, or if we didn't want to schedule a work session, talk about it at this meeting. I also contacted the sheriff to go over any of these items as well, or to understand what the concerns and questions were. I put this together finally based on information when I talked with you yesterday, but have not heard anything back from the sheriff or any clarifications or what their concerns are on the budget. So, you know, I provided this documentation to you all early on in the budget, provided the sheriff's office to show what our proposed breakdown was and what we're looking at. There's not been any information that I have tried to disclose in the process. The sheriff's office is a very confusing budget and, as I mentioned, one of the challenges is, with this PAF, is the tracking of everything between what's PAF funded and what's general fund funded. And you all remember in one of the budget discussions, my recommendation was, if we're going to start moving $200,000, $300,000 in funding out of the PAF into the general fund, let's save Anthony Klein and Bruce Grant and our finance department a tremendous amount of time and discuss just not even worrying about trying to track these things separately, because it's all a form of general fund money that you all approve. You all approve, whether it's going to be 100,000, 200,000 for vehicles, personnel, overtime, whatever in the process. So, that makes the budget a whole lot simpler then, because then it all gets into a 3102 line item and you can clearly see what's coming out of the general fund and you're not trying to do this delicate balance back and forth of calculating what's PAF and what's general fund.
All right, thank you. I just, I think we need to, to support the Sheriff's Department, based on what's going on in the world today. And I'll just go ahead and say it. Mr. Foster, you got my support, Sheriff's Department, town police, VSP, whoever it may be. I'll always support the Sheriff's Department. All this talks about defunding the police departments, that's ridiculous and ludicrous and it'll never happen as long as I'm here.
All say to that, Mr. Foster. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I had a river flood concern, I pass it on to Stephen. I did have a couple of questions people had asked me, Mr. Crawford's not here, about the Corona numbers and how they're, are they doing contact tracing and also how are they counting? Apparently you can get an antibody test and I had a question about if you test positive for the antibody, which means at some point you had it, are they counting that as a positive? Because I, they're, I don't quite understand their method of math, I guess would be the right way to say it.
I don't think anyone understands their theory.
And, you know, and I've got on this soapbox before with, I want to be able to give people accurate information. And I think as adults, they can make their own choices. I don't think I need to go there and tell me what to do, I'm a grown man. But anyway, if you will get with Mr. Crawford and see, get an answer to those and just shoot me an email so I can let these people know.
I will, I do know. I talked to him before the meeting and he talked about, you know, seemed to be some isolated situations that have sort of created bump in our numbers, but also the additional testing, which was anticipated to create. But I do not know the answer to the antibody test and I will find out. And I did see the information where the Health Department's going to stop toward it on the recoveries numbers. Is that the number, the information I saw the other day on that? And I'll follow up on that as well and see what I can on it. But, yeah, it is, the information coming from the Health Department is somewhat confusing on their numbers.
And I, you know, and I, I think it feeds into the, I don't want to say paranoia, but I think it feeds into people that have questions about the whole situation.
Absolutely.
When they don't just give black and white numbers. It's, that's my opinion. And I'm not saying they're doing anything wrong, I'm just saying give us the numbers, give us the easy to understand numbers. But that's, and speaking of the coronavirus, I will say that, you know, the county's got three custodians for all these county buildings and these women and men have, I mean, they have just done a tremendous job. It's, they have cleaned and cleaned and, you know, Mr. Kush mentioned something about pay raises a while ago. We don't, we know they don't make anything, but they, they're certainly appreciated and I hope, I hope they realize that.
And I think it is possible, just as we continue evolving with the courts opening and the cleanings in between court sessions and things like that, we may have to be looking at additional personnel and I would be proposing that with the CARES Act money to provide the personnel for the cleaning of the buildings, at least through December timeframe in the process.
Well, good luck finding somebody if you can get nine days six a week sitting at home. Does anybody else have anything else? All right, we'll take a two-minute recess so Mr. Farley can reset. The With County Board of Supervisors would like to take time to recognize the class of 2020. We have With County Resolution 2020-21 for the graduating class of 2020. Whereas, safety measures to reduce the spread of COVID-19 resulted in the early closing of all schools in the Commonwealth of Virginia during the 2019-2020 school year. And whereas, the graduating class of 2020 were denied the opportunity to enjoy a traditional senior year. And whereas, there were no proms, senior trips, our conventional graduation ceremony held in their honor. And whereas, the graduating class of 2020 face a future that is unique from previous classes. And whereas, the graduating class of 2020 will enter the workforce, pursue higher education, and serve in our nation's armed forces in the coming months. Now, therefore be it resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors, assembled in regular session on this ninth day of June 2020, doth hereby express its warmest congratulations and well wishes to the 2020 graduates of Fort Chiswell High School, George With High School, and Rural Retreat High School, their family and friends. And be it further resolved that the With County Board of Supervisors doth wish them unbridled success and happiness in the decades that follow. And be it further resolved that this resolution be entered into the official minutes of the With County Board of Supervisors this ninth day of June 2020. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Have a motion by Mr. Terry, have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Supervisor Horni. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We wish you the absolute best. We, as we said, we realize that you did not have a traditional senior year, you missed out on a lot of stuff. But we do wish you the absolute best as you move forward in your life and we hope that you always consider With County home.
Mr. Smith?
I'd like to say congratulations to the Pioneer Nation seniors for 2020. 2020 started out as a good year, ended in tough times. I would just say don't let this define your future, just keep your head up and just go for your goals.
Mr. Cook? I would like to congratulate all three high schools on their graduations upcoming. Also congratulate the seniors for having the longest skip day ever. I hope to see you all at your graduations. Ms. Lawson?
Congrats to all classes of 2020 and With County. We're all so proud of you. Please never stop growing, exploring, learning, or challenging yourselves. Caps off to you.
Mr. McRoberts?
Well, I would like to say congratulations to all three high schools, those seniors. You worked hard. It's a shame you didn't get to enjoy it like the rest of them, but maybe you'll do it when you graduate from college. Keep looking up, not backwards. Thank you.
Mr. Horni?
I'd just like to congratulate all three high school seniors and the Technology Center. I don't know if we needed to add them to the resolution, but we didn't. So, congratulations to them also. They've definitely, y'all have definitely had a trying time. They've definitely, y'all have definitely had a trying time. Some of you may have enjoyed the senior skip day though that lasted so long. I know I have, partially because I didn't have to drive a bus every day. So I think they have got great opportunities ahead of them, and I just hope they look forward and move on.
Mr. Terry?
Just wanted to extend my sincere congratulations to all three high schools on graduation. I want to reiterate, really hope you enjoyed that long senior skip day. Know it's been really tough. Like I say, Jamie started out, said 2020 started off awesome, and it's kind of ending on a, on a down note through COVID-19. But always keep your head up, always move forward, don't ever look back, you can't change the past, but you can control the future. Always look forward to, to watch the come, there are brighter days ahead. And I hope you continue to keep With County as your home, and hopefully a lot of you will come back and have great families and great careers here. So blessings to all the graduates of 2020.
Again, congratulations to all the graduates. Go forth and do great things, and may God bless you in whatever you decide to do. Anybody have anything else? Mr. Barry?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Collins? We'll be in recess until Thursday, June 11th, 2020, at 8:00, 6:00 PM.